Good everybody, if I could have your attention. Hello, hello? Hello, everybody? All right, before I actually kick this meeting off, I just want to take a moment and we had a tragic accident last night. And we had a young girl drown in one of our retention ponds. Not one of our retention ponds, in a pond. And it was crushing. Family members were there. It was one of those things that, I mean, early on in the evening, we were all hopeful. I know the fire department was hopeful that maybe something else transpired. I know our police department were hopeful, but late in the evening, we recovered this little girl from the waters. So I just wanted to take a moment before we start our meeting, and if you all don't mind, just doing a moment in silence for this young lady and for her family, because as we all know, I can't imagine what they're going through. So as we do this, if your thoughts and prayers could go out to that family to help them move forward as much as they possibly can, it would be greatly appreciated. So a moment of silence, please. There is no positive that you could ever communicate in a situation like this, but what I will say is, I mean, I was there with city manager Nicholas for hours, and Chief Byrd, our first responders, which were the police at the time. I mean, can you imagine people jumping in fully clothed, trying to find this little girl, regardless of their own safety, regardless of what they were wearing or what was going on? It was amazing to hear and see. And then our firefighters and our EMTs showed up, and Luke was there on the ground coordinating everything, our acting chief. And we probably had, what, seven, eight, nine departments from surrounding communities showing up, doing everything they can, responding as quick as possible. Then boats showed up from Shabano and other communities, and then divers showed up. We probably had 11 divers and shifts of three, doing everything that they could, as quickly as they could. And it was a real reflection of the training all these individuals go through, that this effort, even with, I don't even know how many, I don't even know how many fire trucks and ambulances and special units and divers were there, but it was a well-oiled machine. So if we ever wonder, the funds that we dedicate towards our police department and our fire department, if we ever wonder why do we build another fire station, if we ever wonder these things, I'm telling you, last night, last night was a perfect example of why this council has prioritized what we need. And the reason we prioritized it is because our police department and fire department have communicated clearly the need that was out there, the example of why we needed to dedicate those funds. And this council, I give a ton of credit, and previous councils for approving it and setting the standard. And that allowed us, even though last night's result wasn't what we all were hopeful of, but there was not any effort that could have gone beyond what we did that night. And I also want to communicate, there's no fault to be given, there's no blame to be assigned in this. This was just a tragic accident of kids being kids. But seeing it firsthand, I just want to commend Chief Byrd and your team, I want to commend Luke and your team, on everything that you all did that night to try and drive towards a successful outcome. And you did that with such professionalism that it was inspiring to see what you all did. So thank you, and make sure you pass that on. I think I can speak on behalf of council, pass it on to your teams, that we all appreciate everything that you all do. With that, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. So this is the DeKalb City Council meeting of July 28, 2025, to order. So roll call, please, sir.
Zazada.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Walker.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Moving on to agenda item B, Pledge of Allegiance. I would love it if Captain Hy-Vee, if you wouldn't mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
... the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry. All right, moving on to agenda item C, approval of the agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Zazada.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
So the agenda has been approved. Moving on to agenda item D, presentations. Our first one, we have a proclamation recognizing Habitat for Humanity of DeKalb County. I will follow my own sword here, or whatever you want to say. This was something I needed to do last month, and if you can only imagine, different things happen in personal life and community, and I didn't make it happen, but I really wanted to make sure that we took a moment as a council and as a public to recognize Habitat for Humanity. Thank you, city clerk.
Oh, oh, got it.
So I'm going to go ahead and read that right now. So we're recognizing Habitat for Humanity of DeKalb County. So whereas Habitat for Humanity is a nonprofit organization with a mission to bring people together to build homes, communities, and hope. And since its founding in 1976, Habitat for Humanity has helped more than 46 million people worldwide achieve strength, stability, and self-reliance through shelter. And Habitat for Humanity's work in DeKalb County has transformed lives by making affordable homeownership a reality for hard-working individuals and families. And Habitat's homeowners help build their own homes alongside with volunteers and pay an affordable mortgage, empowering them to invest in their family's future and contribute to the strength and vitality of our community. And Habitat for Humanity relies on the commitment of volunteers, all of us, donors, community partners, and local governments, whose efforts reflect the values of service, compassion, and community. And June 28, 2025 marked a day of celebration, volunteerism, and recognition of the collective impact Habitat for Humanity has made in DeKalb and beyond. Now therefore, I, Coen Barnes, mayor of the city of DeKalb, do hereby recognize and support the vital work Habitat for Humanity of DeKalb County continues to do in building homes, strengthen neighborhoods, and fostering hope and encourage all residents to do the same. Can we give a round of applause for Habitat for Humanity? Because of scheduling, I don't know, is there anyone from Habitat for Humanity to receive this proclamation? They would have been here in a previous council meeting, so that's no reflection on the commitment they have in receiving this proclamation. So we'll make sure to get that to them, Ruth, we can make that connection. Awesome. All right, then moving on to agenda item D2, Opportunity DeKalb Breakthrough Community Business Academy Report. So give me one sec here, yes. All right, so we have, before we actually have the report given, I've got some public comments from some, and I would be honored for former mayor Jerry Smith, if you want to come up and kick us off, on what a great organization this is.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes. I've been asked by the executive director of Opportunity DeKalb, Chad Glover, to make a few comments in support of Breakthrough Business Academy and the Opportunity DeKalb umbrella, and I'm delighted to do that. As most of you remember, it was in August 2017, about eight years ago, where the council approved the creation of the Antiglenn North Revitalization Project. We formed a 30-member task force, very diverse group of folks from throughout the community. And over the last eight years, wow, have we made great progress in the northwest quadrant of our community. And this has led to what has become Opportunity DeKalb. And one of those 30 members that I originally had the opportunity to choose back in 2017 was a young guy who was working at Northern at the time, Chad Glover. Chad now has become the executive director of Opportunity DeKalb. Community partnerships, Opportunity DeKalb has it written all over it. The city has been so involved in this, not only from a fiscal standpoint, but when the theater and the shopping center there at Hillcrest was razed, big time, big time help. That whole area up there, NIU, DeKalb County Community Gardens have indicated their support of that particular region. Of the DeKalb Park District, Welsh Park and the improvement that we've seen there. A huge effort of Chad and his group was to strike an agreement with a nationally-recognized organization called Rising Tide Capital. DeKalb is but one of a few communities across this country who's been involved with Rising Capital, and that's a real feather in our cap. Projects going forward, we've seen so much community support. For example, Fun Jam in the Park, and I have to give kudos to Chief Byrd, what your police department and what you have done with Fun Jam in the Park, and so many groups have been involved. Opportunity DeKalb was the catalyst to make all that happen. One of its latest projects now, Breakthrough Business Academy. Chad and others will be talking more specific about that particular project, but it's all about entrepreneurship and allowing young people in our community to build a business, to do a business, and to grow that business in the city of DeKalb. I attended a graduation ceremony recently, and again, Chad, I'm sure will have a few comments about the success of that. So I would simply encourage the council to continue this momentum. As you prepare budgeting for the next fiscal year, I'd ask you to be supportive of Opportunity DeKalb and specifically Breakthrough Business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And that was two minutes and 59 seconds. I'm impressed, sir. I am impressed. All right, then next, we have Malia Jones. Want to come up, Malia? If you're not familiar with Malia, just a rock star, up-and-coming community leader in our northwest region.
Hi, everyone. I'll start off with the quote, "Strong families build strong communities. The health of our neighborhoods start with how we support our children and our caregivers." That's the quote from the Urban Institute. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Malia Jones, and I wear many hats in this community. I'm the founder of the Breakerman Friends and currently serve as the family engagement specialist for Birth to Five Illinois, Region 16. But tonight, I'm just here as somebody who has called DeKalb home for over 20 years. A little background on my connection to AGN, my journey in DeKalb started in University Village when my family moved from the city to DeKalb to establish a better living for our family. Many of us have lived in and outside of Antiglenn North over the course of many years. We've worked multiple jobs, ran part-time gigs, operated home daycares, youth programs, cooked and catered from our own kitchens. We collaborated with neighbors using our gifts and talents to make ends meet. That kind of community hustle and support, that network, that it takes a village mentality, was strongly fostered in my upbringing in DeKalb County. But over the course of time, as people and programs have filtered in and out of our community, a lot of that has seemed to dwindled quite a bit in certain parts of our community. That's why programs like the Breakthrough Business Academy are not just helpful, but they are essential. They help rebuild that network, they empower people to take what they already have, skills, creativity, determination, and finally put structure and sustainability behind it. Breakthrough doesn't just inspire, it equips. Over the past few years, I've had the privilege of collaborating with Opportunity DeKalb, more so specifically Chad Glover, on things like Uptown Sounds, Fun Jam in the Park, NIU Steam and Dream in Welsh Park, and community listening sessions. These aren't just events, they're spaces for connection. They're where families, students, and long-term residents come together to be seen, to be heard, and to be part of spaces of belonging. Opportunity DeKalb has been essential in creating those bridges, connecting people like myself and college students and young and old professionals, and even grandparents to chances to grow and lead in our community. Breakthrough is a direct extension of that kind of opportunity. DeKalb is no longer just a small college town. We are growing, we are diverse, we are rich in potential and full of resources, but we are also not always rich in awareness. And what good are resources if people don't know they exist? Breakthrough Business Academy narrows that gap. It meets people where they are, it turns side hustles into sustainable businesses, it takes people who are already contributing to our community and gives them tools to contribute even more. When Breakthrough is supported by anchors like Opportunity DeKalb, progress doesn't just show up in reports, it shows up on our blocks. We live in the results every day. So I urge you, don't just continue to support Breakthrough Business Academy, but champion it, elevate it, fund it, like our future depends on it, because it does. Let's move beyond just the conversations and into commitments and invest in what's already working. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Malia. All right, I have Melissa Amadeo from the DCEDC. There you are.
So thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. When Chad asked me to speak tonight, I didn't hesitate. As the executive director of DCEDC, obviously this, obviously Breakthrough Business has a direct impact on economic development. So I was honored to be asked to join the board of Breakthrough Business, because I know that entrepreneurship and small businesses are essential to building thriving, resilient communities. They create local jobs, bring vibrancy to our neighborhoods, and provide pathways for people to build financial independence and purpose. When we support entrepreneurs, especially those who may not have had access to traditional resources, we're investing in the long-term health of our entire community. What inspired me about Breakthrough Business is its commitment to that kind of impact. It's not just about helping people start businesses, it's about equipping them with the tools, the knowledge, and the confidence to succeed in a sustainable way. That kind of grassroots empowerment is exactly what communities, not just in DeKalb, but across our entire county, need in order to grow from within. In my role as executive director as DCEDC, I see how critical it is to support the small business ecosystem. Breakthrough Business plays a key role in that work. It provides an on-ramp to opportunity for aspiring entrepreneurs and helps strengthen the economic fabric of DeKalb. I joined the board to be part of something that's transformational, not transactional, something that uplifts people and builds community success from the ground up. That's what Breakthrough Business is doing, and I'm proud to support it.
Thank you, Melissa. And for clarification for council, Melissa is the executive director of the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation. Her and I met recently, and I would categorize her as wicked smock and a true champion of the city of DeKalb and DeKalb County at large. She has taken that position to a whole nother level, interacting with state agencies and educating the state on all the economic development opportunities we have here in the city of DeKalb and the DeKalb County region itself. And I haven't seen anything like that in an organization for quite some time. Not that previous executive directors weren't incredible in their roles, but from an advocacy perspective, Melissa is phenomenal. I was president of that organization, so I do know what I'm talking about on that, that having her and the funds that we dedicate towards DCEDC, the ROI is huge. So thanks for coming out, Melissa. All right, then we have Kathleen, is it Eaton? Welcome, Kathleen. And Kathleen, most people have come up here before, just so you know, it's three minutes, I have to hold you to that?
I'm watching it. I already do.
Okay. I wish I could go longer, but I have to be consistent in that.
I have a tendency to go short, or so.
All right, perfect.
My name is Kathleen Eaton. I was in the second cohort of Community Business Academy. I was a retired, I am a retired nurse from Northwestern Medicine. It's my third career, but I had a real passion for it. I was very lucky to enjoy my job every day. I could help people. I could help people at their worst moments, and it was a real gift to me, let alone to them. So when I retired, I decided I didn't want to lose that. I didn't want to stop doing that, and I needed to start my own business doing that. I knew how to do the nursing side, I had no idea how to do the business side. What I got out of my classes with Danita and Chad was confidence, connection, and a clear direction. Running a service business can feel isolating, but in CBA, I found a supportive environment full of other entrepreneurs, who you'll hear from shortly, navigating similar journeys. We exchanged ideas, shared, and pushed each other to think bigger. I also gained the confidence to present my business professionally to clients and collaborators and even potential investors. Since completing the program, my business has become more focused, intentional, and impactful. I've learned who my audience is, I've learned that I have support, even though I've graduated from Danita and Chad, they're an amazing source of support for me, even though I'm done with it now, they still are there. Danita shows up and takes pictures when I do presentations. I'm usually just better than this, but I came from another program, so I apologize. I think your money's very well invested there. Small business is a lifeblood of a society, and they do an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and then we have Glenn Robey. Glenn is directly involved in Greek life with Northern Illinois University and especially Greek Row. Glenn is something, or someone that we work with regularly on events within Greek Row, like TUGS, but then also with the DeKalb Area Runners Association. He's had leadership roles in that. Are you president now?
President.
President of the DeKalb Area Runners Association, and is a great person to run ideas through when we talk about crime-free housing, or we talk about changes that we want to make. He's one that we lean on for representation of that organization as well, and on the board of directors for Opportunity DeKalb.
President.
Glenn, president.
So, thank you. So I'm here today really just to kind of advocate for a group that I've become very passionate about. Former mayor Jerry Smith, I was one of the 30 people that were on the task force that eventually led into Opportunity DeKalb, and now I'm also president of Opportunity DeKalb and a board member of Breakthrough Business. Danita and Chad, as been said before, are instrumental to the success of the organization they live at day-to-day. I'm here to advocate, fill in, do whatever it is called, do upon for that, for both organizations. I just ask that you all continue your support of this endeavor. My life has been changed very dramatically as a result of being part of Opportunity DeKalb, working with the police chief on the event that we do, we used to do every Tuesday, Fun Jam in the Park, to see the young people that are impacted by just showing that the relationship between the police and Opportunity DeKalb, supporting that in the neighborhood is just wonderful. In fact, I was the first one, there were young kids arresting the police officer, so that was quite an entertaining and uplifting moment. They were good sports about it. Breakthrough Business is essential. The folks that I've met through that academy, I mean, they're like family, I just am inspired by their passion for the things that they do, their commitment to trying to better their lives, their side hustle becoming possibly their main hustle. You just don't see anything like that happening in the communities across the US. And to know that this is happening in DeKalb is a really special thing. So I want to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to be here before you, but I want to thank you all, the academy members, for allowing me to be a part of your life and to know and grow with you as you pursue other things in business in our community. Thank you very much, we really appreciate you all.
Thank you, Mr. Robey. All right, with that, we have a report, and would it be, do you want to kick it off, Bill, or you want Chad to come up, or?
It's Chad's report, so let's bring him up.
Mr. Chad Glover, welcome.
Good evening.
Looking forward to hearing what you have to present.
First of all, I want to thank the council for allowing us the opportunity to come back and share an update with you. My name's Chad Glover, and I serve as the executive director of Opportunity DeKalb. Gip Seaver is behind me, he's going to join in on the presentation here just in a moment. Gip served for several years on the Opportunity DeKalb Board and is currently the board chair of Breakthrough Business, which is what I'm going to share a little bit about with you tonight. Also want to thank the people that came and spoke on our behalf, really appreciate that, as well as the number of the graduates from the academy are here tonight in the audience, we really want to thank them for being here tonight, and just everybody that has, we've met and who's supported us along our journey for the last six or seven years now. So to get started, I think we have some slides. Those are going to be pulled up or not?
Give him a second, he's usually pretty jolly on the spot here.
Okay. Should I just go ahead and start?
Beaming, baby.
Okay. So there's a, most people in the community and the council, of course, are familiar with Opportunity DeKalb, right? So we started as a 501(c)(3), directly as a result of the Antiglenn North Revitalization Plan, to work in collaboration with others to achieve the goals of the plan. So that's one organization. And then last year, we started the Breakthrough Community Business Academy under Opportunity DeKalb. What we're now in the process of doing is spinning off Breakthrough Business as a separate organization, that will be an entrepreneurship support organization, of which Opportunity DeKalb is a lead partner. So I want to highlight a little bit of that work here tonight. So first, I think most of you know, again, Opportunity DeKalb and our work. We started out, in our first several years, we were an advocacy organization, working in a number of different ways across goals related to the plan. And I won't go through our whole history tonight, but I do want to highlight Welsh Park. And a couple people have already talked about Welsh Park tonight, and sometimes people forget that Welsh Park and creating Welsh Park not only is a local destination, but a regional destination for the whole community, was one of the top 10 goals of the AGN plan. I'm a firm believer that anytime you do work in the community, you stand on the shoulders of others. And there's a lot of people in DeKalb that have done a lot over the years before we came onto the scene to help lay the groundwork for things happening at Welsh Park. But when we started the organization, the first thing, our first organized act was to serve as the lead advocate for what became an $800,000 reinvestment in Welsh Park. So when people go out to Welsh Park and what they see out there today, that was mostly paid for by the investment that happened and the collaboration with the DeKalb Park District on a grant that helped pay for that. Shortly after the renovations happened, we had a goal to have a community event in Welsh Park every week of the summer. And that first summer in 2022, after the enhancements were finished, we started out, we did a couple of events, that's about what we had the bandwidth to do. And then along the way, we met Malia, and she became a central partner to the work that we were doing out there. But we still had a limited bandwidth, even though the events were going great. The real defining moment there came in the late spring in 2023, when Malia and I and Tiffany Tucker met with Chief Byrd in his office. And the chief proceeded to tell us that he wanted the DeKalb Police Department to be out in the park all summer. And we left that meeting, we were just taken aback, chief, by your commitment, and those are the men and women of the DeKalb Police Department. And that Birth Fun Jam in the Park, which as Glenn mentioned, just finished its third year, and I know many of you have been out, many people in the audience have been out at that event during the summer. It's an incredible experience, and I can't wait for it to start up again next year. So chief, I just wanted to give you a shout-out for everything that you've done and your leadership and commitment on that. So thank you. So we were contributing in a lot of different ways of the plan, but we were growing frustrated that we weren't achieving kind of the primary goals that we wanted to, related to some of the economic development and kind of broader redevelopment of the neighborhood. So we spent about a year focusing on how other communities in similar circumstances had success, coupled by our time out in the neighborhood, meeting with people. And the thing I always say is, you know, often we've talked about the differences amongst people in Antiglenn North, student versus family, people from different backgrounds, and all those differences are important. But the thing that I always say that's uniting, the most uniting thing about the neighborhood, most people who live there are here to get from where they are in life to where they want to be for themselves and their families. And that's a huge honor as a community, that we are a place that people come as part of that journey. Many of the people we met were working on business ideas or businesses they had, so we set out to figure out how we might make a meaningful contribution. Former mayor Smith mentioned that that led us to a partnership with Rising Tide Capital. We're only the 18th community in the United States that is a partner of Rising Tide, they've been around for 20 years, one of the most well-known national entrepreneurship They've been around for 20 years, one of the most well-known national entrepreneurship organizations in the country. That allowed us to start the Community Business Academy last fall, and the city council's catalytic investment in our work was central to that. Without your support, we would not have been able to bring on Danita Sims, who's here in the audience tonight, as our director of programming and community development. And Danita has been the lead instructor on the academy, and she's done a phenomenal job. You've heard a number of people already comment to that tonight. So we're excited about the future. We're starting our recruitment for our third cohort. As Melissa and others said, though, the work with Breakthrough Business isn't simply about the Community Business Academy, although that's a foundational element. We also want to provide a number of supports for people before they're eligible for the academy and then after they graduate, to allow them to continue to develop their businesses. So some things I highlight briefly that are associated with that. We'd like to launch something called Idea to Income, which would be something for people who have business ideas but haven't made a sale of a product or service yet. So to be eligible for the academy, you have to have made at least one sale of a product or service, even if that's, I sold a birthday cake to a friend for a party, that counts. You know, you don't have your EIN, you don't have legal business yet, you're welcome in the academy in that kind of situation. We've then already debuted something we're calling Breakthrough Business Assistant Services, which is post-graduation support for the academy. We've negotiated a relationship with several chambers of commerce to get free or discounted membership with those chambers to help integrate our graduates into the local business community. We also, just last month, reached a partnership with an organization called Allies for Community Business, which is one of the largest entrepreneurship support organizations in the city of Chicago. Some of you may have heard of the Hatchery before, which is the largest nonprofit food incubator in the United States. And Allies for Community Business is a co-owner of that space. So we're bringing people in the local community and across the region to provide additional support for our graduates. We also hope to do some things related to capital access for entrepreneurs. And eventually, if you study the efforts that are similar to ours in our, here in Decal, they've led to property redevelopment. Once you get a critical mass of entrepreneurs, oftentimes that can lead to opportunities to incubate or house those businesses on a long-term basis. So that's something we hope to come back forward and talk to you more about in the future. We've had 25 people graduate from the academy so far in the first two cohorts. 20 of those are from Decal, four from Sycamore, and one from Shabana. We've had interest from across the county, several small towns, also extending into some of the neighboring counties as well. So in spinning off Breakthrough Business, we really believe that we have an opportunity to root a regional entrepreneurship support organization in the Antiglennorth neighborhood. If we're successful with that, it could have a catalytic effect on the long-term economic redevelopment of the neighborhood. So a couple of people have mentioned funding, and that is important for us to do, right? We've got to raise the money that's needed to do this work like it deserves to be done for the people that we're supporting. We know that that's going to take roughly a $300,000 a year annual budget. We also know where that money comes from in the other communities that have these organizations. It usually comes from a couple of different buckets. One of those is local philanthropy, often in partnership with a community foundation, if one exists in those communities. We've been very fortunate to receive some grant support from the Decal County Community Foundation. We continue to look forward to partnering with them and other donors in the area. Also, local banks typically support these efforts. There's something called the Community Reinvestment Act, which is essentially a compact between financial institutions and the communities they serve. Banks in our communities get certain rights and privileges by way of being a bank, and exchange, they're asked to make certain contributions back to the communities of which they serve. So we all can look at the local banks here in our community and learn about how they're reinvesting those monies they're obligated to do as part of the CRA and ask ourselves if those priorities align with our local priorities. We are fortunate that a number of banks have supported us so far. Local government is also important. Again, we can't thank the city enough for your support. We hope that there'll be an opportunity for that to continue. But we do desire to serve a population. We're already serving a population beyond the city of Decal. So we're going to need other units of local government, like the county and others, to consider supporting us in order to be able to help those entrepreneurs. We're very well positioned to qualify for state and federal grants and private foundation philanthropy, but we do need to secure a stable local financial base before that's likely to be possible. I do want to bring up, again, we're very grateful for some of the partners we've had so far financially and in-kind and letters of support. So I'm actually going to ask Gip to come up real quick and speak to that.
And I'm not rushing at all, but we have a packed agenda. Just making sure you're aware of it, this is all awesome and fascinating.
Mr. Mayor, you know my mind works in either a 50-minute or an hour and 14-minute timeframe, so. Former faculty.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Appreciate that.
Just very briefly, I didn't see you didn't start the clock. Chad had mentioned about the support that we've had in the past. In the packet, which is linked, there is a link to the presentation, and we want to be a little bit more specific about who actually had participated, and I'm not going to go through all of those. But we basically have a large number of people who have provided us letters of support and in-kind contributions. There's about 16 people, 16 organizations that are listed there you can take a look at. There's also a lump where people who have donated more than $20,000 to support, and the budget numbers that you see here are all since March of 2022, when an opportunity board decided to charge Chad with trying to develop a cornerstone project, which we were hearing a lot about entrepreneurship at that particular time. So these numbers reflect starting in March of 2022. The other category is for those that have donated, that we received more than $20,000, either in terms of money or in-kind. And certainly Mortenson was one of the initial ones that kicked us off with $25,000. The city of Decal has, to date, has contributed $145,000 since that March 2022. And then 168 Community LLC, which has contributed over $235,000 as an in-kind contribution. And that actually is an LLC in which Chad is the principal owner. So we wanted to just to kind of give you those three buckets, as you can kind of see, as we talked about the buckets that Chad is talking about. And again, for those of you in the crowd, it is linked in the agenda for the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver.
So I'll wrap with this, and again, encourage anybody, if you want to see some more of the information, you can link to it through the agenda for tonight on the city's background material. You can also reach out to us with any questions. The last thing I'll say is we are, we have launched a membership model for Breakthrough Business at annual contributions amounts, starting at $5,000 going up to $20,000 plus. So if there's any organizations in the community and individuals that are interested in that, please reach out to us. Organizations contributing at $20,000 plus will be invited to join the board to oversee the work moving ahead. So again, thank you very much to the city for your support, for everyone who came out tonight to support us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, anything? How many graduates from Breakthrough Academy are here right now? Yeah, that's awesome. All right, round of applause for these guys.
And I want to make a comment. I'm not a member of the board, but they graciously let me show up to their meetings and provide my input and just guidance on where council's head's at. And I got to tell you, I really do appreciate that, because having a connection to what you all are doing is, warms the heart. So personally, I want to say thank you on that. If you notice, the reason why I was calling out some of the people coming up is there's a lot of heavy hitters. And you could look at heavy hitters from their titles of the organizations that they represent, but what I'm saying is, these are people that carry water. They don't just represent the organization I'm executive director of or I'm president of. These are people that literally, day in and day out, are making it happen. They're in the weeds, they're executing on what the mission is, and if not but for them, the Breakthrough Academy and Opportunity Cal wouldn't make it. So I personally want to thank all of you, that the work that you're doing, from the Malias, the Glens, the Melissas, the Chads, to everyone that came up, the work you're doing is impactful. And I know you know it, right? But it's also seen by so many others. So can't say enough about just keeping up the great work that you're doing. And Chad, you're an amazing human being. So it's really cool to watch you work and see your commitment to the people of Antiglennorth, the people of Sycamore, the people of, was it Shabana? Shabana? Just to see the impact that we're making and the ripples of your involvement are pretty wide. So thank you for everything that you do. Council, any comments or questions? All right, so again, thank you all for coming out. You do not have to stay for the whole meeting. It's okay to leave right now if you want to. I know you all, especially all you entrepreneurs that graduated, you got a lot of stuff to do. So get busy, all right? Get back to work. All right, thank you everyone. All right, moving on to public participation, we have none. Agenda item F, appointments. Talk about another all-star cast. So do we have to approve each one, or can I do all three and we approve all three? City attorney?
You can do all, you can do all three.
Okay.
And if somebody asks for you to divide them, then we can entertain that.
Okay, so this is going to be, I'm going to set the motion to approve all three, which includes number one, appointing Kathryn McLaughlin to the Airport Advisory Board for the completion of a four-year term through December 31, 2028; two, appointing Brian Holinger to the Finance Advisory Committee for the completion of a four-year term through December 31, 2028; and three, appointing Tom Fellebaum to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the completion of a five-year term through December 31, 2029. Can I have a motion to approve all three appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Carlson, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rubic?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Awesome. The appointments have been approved, and I'm really excited about this group coming on board. All right, moving on to agenda item G, consent agenda. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of July 14, 2025. Number two, counts payable and payroll through July 28, 2025, in the amount of $4,438,982.88. Three, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, June 2025. Four, FY 2025 Human Services Funding Second Quarter Report. I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by alderwoman Zazada, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rubic?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
All right, so the consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to public hearings, hang on here. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at, what's the time, 6:42, and it's a public hearing to consider repealing ordinance 2022-070, which approved a zoning map amendment from the NC Neighborhood Commercial District to the PD-R Planned Development Residential District and the preliminary development plan for the property at 145 Fisk Avenue. So I'm going to go ahead and call that. Hearing is open. Is there anyone here from the public that wants to comment on this item during the public hearing? Nancy, you want to come on up?
Thank you. My name is Nancy Dougherty. I live at 108 Fisk Avenue, almost directly across from the vacant former St. Mary's Hospital, which is your 145 Fisk Avenue. My concern about the current state of this building is safety. On my way to church on March 30, I had a step over various pieces of plywood with white covering from the broken windows of the former hospital that had blown across the street and onto the sidewalk. I took photos of these items at that location and contacted my alderman. At that time, I suggested the city personnel inspect all the windows as they appear damaged from weather and wind. In April, I was advised that this unsafe situation was being looked at and monitored. It was my understanding that the owner would start renovations or construction sometime in May of this year. But as of today, I have not observed any changes or any development. So I'm still concerned about debris from the deteriorating building falling off and blowing across the street, possibly hitting one of the many cars that travel on one-way Fisk, or any of us walking in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hello all. My name is Sharon Nicola. I live at 108 Fisk Avenue, less than a block kitty corner to the former St. Mary's Hospital at 145 Fisk. I have talked with several neighbors and local Decal residents who have fond memories of the hospital where their children were born or their grandchildren were born, and others who have sadder memories, but all appreciate the services St. Mary's Hospital did provide back in the day. We recognize that St. Mary's Hospital served Decal well from 1922 until 1965. After that, the building served as a dormitory and finally for Decal's school district offices. It was last a viable building of service to the community in 1992. Although the building sat vacant and not maintained for 30 years, a proposal to rehab it for residents was unanimously approved by city council in 2022. Nothing came of that plan, and the building was left to deteriorate further. If COVID-related insufficiencies are being blamed for the lack of attention to the building or any further action on the original redevelopment proposal, I'd like to point to a recent notice that the Rise and Shine Restaurant on Decal Avenue opened just as COVID hit restaurants particularly hard. Rise and Shine just celebrated a successful five years in operation. There is no viable reason why the residents in this neighborhood should suffer because of the building's neglect. Blight spreads. Witness Detroit. We are not Detroit. We are Decal. Keep us Decal proud.
Thank you, ma'am.
Question for you. I've got a little bit more than three, am I on a three-minute clock?
You are not.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, public hearings, so everyone knows, public hearings are done differently. It's not a three-minute limitation. Speak to your point, as long as you stay on topic, we're good to go.
Perfect. I'm John Sossar. I'm the owner of the property. And I would like to start and just kind of apologize to the neighbors, to staff, and to the city. I certainly understand all your concerns and your feelings. I really apologize for the delay. It was not my intention for it ever to get delayed this long. And, you know, but I certainly understand the neighbors and the city and staff have been dealing with a building for 30 years. While this wasn't, you know, I haven't owned it that long. I came to the party, but I have to remind myself, I understand where you guys are all coming from. So I'm doing my, you know, best to put myself in your shoes, which I'm trying to do. I've got a few things, and I appreciate, you know, Sheri and Nancy's comments. So let me address that. A couple of things, we thought we were going to be, you know, start with construction prior to now. So some of the windows that were boarded up, the previous owners had put kind of a thinner boarding material up there, and those are kind of delaminating. And so that, in March, some of that after winter time had come off. So I went out and we did get those cleaned up, and I know the city did write me, and, you know, due to that, did write me a municipal ticket. So, you know, we got that cleaned up. And I know certainly the city staff has been concerned on, is it boarded up or is it secure? The building has always been secure. We purposely did take off some of the boarding, so we have some light in there, and then also so we could measure some of the windows. So if there's, you know, anything beyond that or issues moving forward, I'm happy to, you know, I think my contact info is out there, but, you know, I'm part of the community, and I wanted to make this clean and look nice for all the people in the neighborhood as well as all this, the whole city. But we've had a few different reasons why we're delayed, and certainly I understand your point about COVID. This isn't really a COVID issue. We've had multiple delays for many different reasons. I think we can all understand sometimes constructions get delayed. But, you know, this ordinance, what we really need to complete is the final plat, the landscape design, and the lighting design. And, but beyond that, there's the architectural plans that have to go. And all that's been working in, at the same time in the background. And when you have a building with a shell, you're kind of building it from the outside in, the opposite of where you would normally, you know, build a building. So everyone probably hasn't been in there, but it's not just like remodeling your bathroom or your kitchen. This is a steel structure with- This is a steel structure with floor joists and then masonry walls, and then an exterior masonry wall. So we're trying, you know, it's more of a challenge to accommodate modern codes and everything to the existing masonry, you know, to get your windows to fit, et cetera, so that everything goes to the code and also, you know, maintains that beautiful facade and looks nice. So that by nature is just a challenge. Now, that wouldn't have drug us this far, I certainly understand that, but we've had a few other delays beyond that. The engineering firm that we use is a great engineering firm, they have since, like a lot of companies sometimes, they've gone through a sale. So when a company gets bought out, sometimes that stuff changes hands and things get a little wonky. In addition to that, the lead engineer retired that was working on this project, so therefore that throws some other delays. Then the other thing is, that engineering firm doesn't do the, with their delays, they don't do the lighting or the landscape plan. That falls, you'll have to get the architect to do that. So getting those to communicate to them, it just gets delays and delays. Now, from my standpoint, another complicated it, and I'll try and be as brief as I can, I had two other personal delays in one of my businesses. I had a 12-year manager retire, and my resources personally got sucked up training a new employee for a while, and then personally I had a couple of health issues. I'm fine, but something requiring surgery, which I think we've all gone through the healthcare system, and sometimes that can drag on. The, I'll try and summarize here and bring us to the good news. The landscape plan is ready for final review, the lighting plan is ready for final review. I'm just waiting, getting a timeline from the engineer to complete their final plat, and then we should be back here to the city very quickly, and with this, in a matter of weeks or sooner, with all this documentation to get this final approved and get the ball rolling. So that's the good news. The other good news is I do have the electrical permit, so I'm kind of speaking to the city and to the community here. So I know when you don't see a lot of work happening, everyone's kind of wondering what's going on, and all you see is, you know, you know, the window, you know, stuff that came off. But we've got our electrical permit, and the electrician has got the temporary panel ready to go, so we'll be able to get some light on there, temporary light, which will also help with the neighborhood as far as having any kind of vandalism or, you know, any kind of, you know, for people wanting to cause mischief. So I think things are all headed in the right way, we're ready to move on this project. Yeah, the staff has been great, I do appreciate everyone's patience, so I hope I gave you enough info, but didn't talk too long, so I'm happy to answer questions.
Mr. Saucer, we usually don't do a back and forth.
Okay.
We're going to address this at a later agenda item where council's going to have a discussion, but the one thing you didn't cover, and I want to make sure you have the opportunity to cover it, is we've worked with you and appraised you of various situations, but had to resort to fines, and it's my understanding the fines still have not been paid. So I don't know if you could address that before we move on?
Oh, certainly. So due to the delaminating windows, a fine was issued, and I went, called the city, and basically go to municipal court here, and the city was kind enough and the judge was kind enough to say, we will extend this out. The goal isn't to fine me, and I appreciate that. The goal is to get the building cleaned up and get it built. So I understand the reason for the fine, but they were kind enough to work with me and say, okay, if you get this going, then we can reduce the fine or maybe waive it, probably reduce it. And so the administrative judge also agreed to that. So they have pushed that out until, I believe, September, and so to giving us time to get this all wrapped up and get the ball rolling.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to cover this in a later agenda item where we can have our open discussion. Mr. Saucer, I thank you, thank you for everyone else. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this? Please, come on up. Mr. Bob Carlson, and as you're walking up, definitely want to express thank you for donating the land for the path that we have on Hillcrest. That underpass underneath the bridge would not have been, First Street, yeah, sorry, First Street, would not have been possible without the generous contribution of the Carlson family, so thank you.
Yes. My name is Robert Carlson, I'm a resident of DeKalb. My background is I did real estate valuations of DeKalb properties from 1977 to 2019, and I retired the business in 2019. During that time period of 42 years, I completed real estate appraisals on an estimate of 80% of the multifamily properties in DeKalb. In 2008, my son, wife, and I purchased Hillcrest Place Apartments. We continued acquiring additional complexes in Sycamore and DeKalb, and presently we have 320 apartment units. We own 30 units within one block of the Fisk Street property, and an additional 144 units within a two-to-three-block proximity to the Fisk Street property. Based on my experience, I determined the highest and best use of the site, and I would be against returning the zoning to NC Neighborhood Commercial. Now, Fisk Avenue is a one-way and a secondary street. When I had my office open on Oak Street, which is two blocks to the south, Steve Milner owned the property at that time, and it was the Brot Milner Building. The first floor was apartments, and being on a secondary street, he converted all those offices to residential units. Mason Properties owned a property on Oak Street in which the, 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 the building had been vacant for probably three, four years, so demand for commercial in these secondary areas would not be very strong. So I think the highest and best use of the subject site is for residential multifamily Then I would, my background with John Saucer, during my appraisal career, I did valuations on multifamily properties owned by the Saucer families. These properties were located in DeKalb, Macoban, Macomb, and Carbondale. During the research of each one of these communities and market areas, I found city officials to be very accepting of the Saucers. In fact, Rolf Anderson and John, when I was doing the appraisal work down at Carbondale, the assistant city manager told me we love these guys, so it's just, gives you an indication of the background of John Saucer. And I find John to be, to have been a very prudent property owner in DeKalb, and finally, in my opinion of the property of 145 Fisk Avenue, I think he has the knowledge and the ability to, to perform this, this project. And I, as an adjacent property owner, is living at 417 and 429 and 418 First Street, directly across the street. I give John my total approval of this project. Now, I want to go back in time a little bit, is when it had, the site had the NC Neighborhood Commercial zoning, we had somebody come in and was, wanted to put a hotel and a lounge in that property, and I'm totally against that, that's why I'm against the, returning the zoning to Neighborhood Commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Anyone else want to speak on this particular topic? Hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:59. All right, moving on to agenda item I, considerations, we have none. Agenda item J, resolutions. Number one, resolution 2025-072, authorizing a Fund 400 Architectural Improvement Program grant for 930 Pappas Drive in the amount of $19,665.59, Big O's Barbecue. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The council back in 2023 created a variation of a program that we've had in the Tiff District, Tiff District 3, and now Tiff District 4, and it's called AIP, is the acronym Architectural Improvement Program, as to give small grants to commercial properties in, in our community that are oftentimes owned by families or small startups, and it helps them with maybe just changing the signage on the storefront, or, or bringing the front entrance up to code, or a bathroom inside up to code, and things that cost enough that might discourage a family business from starting. And with the council's approval, we proposed back in 2023 that we try to find a way to extend this to non-Tiff areas, limit the amount of money, in this case it's $70,000, this year it was $70,000 in the last two years since it's been in existence, and it's been pretty successful. It helped the Sullivan family with their remodel, and it's done some other things. These are just commercial grants, just as they are in the Tiff District. Well, so far this year, nothing's been spent out of that program, at least, and there was no contender, contender, excuse me, but about three and a half weeks ago, I was introduced to Alondo, or it goes by O, and Valerie Farmer, who are in the audience today, and they may also want to address the council. And I was very pleased to make their acquaintance. They had been at work trying, working with John Pappas, local property owner, who also owned the little strip center off of North Annie Glidden Road where their business is. They're tucked in the back of what used to be the Starbusters nightclub and restaurant building. There is just room in there for a kitchen and then a takeout window. There's, there's no sit-down seating inside, but boy, what they produce is mouth-watering. They, they're known for the ribs. They will do other things. The palate of our community is broader than that, but I think that's their, that's their key product, and, and they do very well. I've had the opportunity to taste it, and I can, I can confirm that. Mr. Pappas, I'm working with them, didn't know them probably until maybe a year ago, but has been sold on not just their product, but on their willingness to, to create something out of nothing. It's truly a family business, their, their children work with them, they work seven days a week. Last winter, while this process was just a conversation, they were cooking out there, it might have been 10 below, and O was out there trying to just charcoal some, some nice meat. I, I went out, I visited with them, I mentioned I tasted their wares, picked for it. But they, they're here tonight as, I guess, a testament to what small business can do in our community. We heard a long procession of people this earlier. These folks are just looking to be supported as they are getting their feet on the ground. I think they'll be enormously successful, and we heartily recommend what they have asked for. We looked at all of the things that have been spent so far, there's just under $20,000 here, the program per project goes up to $25,000. Now, the property owner is a petitioner, and that's true in this case. The property owner gets this as a reimbursement for work that has been done. The property owner has been working with contractors in our area for a long time, the farmers have not, so it makes sense that that happens, and, but the farmers have petitioned in behalf of their, their takeout business, so we support them and hope you will too.
Counsel, comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Verbic.
I'm very excited for this business, but I also have a note from Alderman Walker. Something came up for him at work, and he was not able to attend, so he's asked me to read a note, which I'm happy to do so. Alderman Walker says, "I had the pleasure of sitting down with Mrs. Farmer and her lovely daughter today. They showed me what the requested funds will be addressing. Even with that amount, they still will be a little short of what they need. Now, with that being said, they have already become a strong force in the Seventh Ward, hosting backpack giveaways with food from their establishment as well. They support the youth in our community and businesses, and people like that need to catch breaks in life at some point. The money that is being asked for will do wonders for the farmer's business. It's our job to help local businesses thrive in our community and succeed. I believe this grant will not only help the farmer's business, it will also lift up the area and be a great contribute, contribution to our business community." Alderman Walker.
Any other comments? Alderwoman Zazada.
I will echo Alderman Walker's sentiments. I had the opportunity to walk through this space and see the work that they're doing and learn more about their business, and I'm honored to have them right beside the First Ward, and I think they're doing a really great thing in the community.
Other comments or questions, Counsel? Yes?
I had the opportunity to stop through and meet you both as well with Mr. Pappas, and I like what you're doing, appreciate what you're doing in the community.
Any others?
I want to try it.
I know, right? I'm excited.
I'm reading, and you're making me hungry, so I'll be there this week.
And I'll be right behind him in line.
We need more barbecue places.
Right. And especially in that neighborhood, it's just great, the commitment that you are showing to the neighborhood, offering another food choice out there, and obviously from what we're hearing, it's, it's pretty awesome, so excited to be able to support your endeavor. Last chance for comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Oh yeah, you need a motion.
Motion. Oh, we didn't do that?
So moved.
Oh my gosh, all right. Motion by Alderman Carlson, seconded by Alderwoman Zazada. Wow, we didn't kick off with a motion, okay. Sorry about that. Roll call then.
Powell?
Yes.
Rubik?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seven out.
Resolution 2025-072 passed. All right, you two, you've got a lot of work to do, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, you can leave, it's not disrespectful at all. Thank you so much, and thanks for supporting the DeKalb community. Looking forward to trying your barbecue. All right, moving on to number two, resolution 2025-073, granting an easement to the Commonwealth Edison Company for the property located at 3001 Pleasant Street. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
I got it. Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. We are officially on the record now. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is pretty straightforward, there's an easement that's needed to be granted to ComEd for the installation of the interconnection poles that will accept the power that's generated by the solar project that Sunvest has been putting together on our airport property on East Pleasant Street, and we recommend its approval.
Counsel, questions or comments? Alderwoman Larson.
So what happens 20 years down the road, besides we'll all be gone, if the solar farm is also gone, what happens to that easement?
So the easement goes with the land. Now, we have lots of easements out there for utilities like this one, and there are some in residential neighborhoods that were never filled with, with the utilities that were expected, and so they're just there, they're not hurting anything. If somebody came in and said, "Look, I'd like to build across that," then they would come before this council, and then we'd look to rescind the easement, there'd be a process for that. And as you know, there's a process for the decommissioning of that solar field if it is necessary at some later point, and it could be wrapped into that process too.
So there's nothing that could stop anything from like the future airport plans or anything?
No, it's, it had to be, first of all, that, that solar farm had to be approved by the FAA to proceed, so this is an enabling thing, there would be no power coming from it if, if there was not an easement for ComEd to pick it up.
I think you're referring to if we had expansion of the network.
Right, well, like, so like if, if 20 years down the road, the, the solar farm is gone, and the airport wants to enlarge, that easement wouldn't stop anything from like a runway or something?
At that point, we would, we would probably look at it, and if it looked like it didn't serve whatever was proposed for that, then we'd call ComEd and we'd do something about it.
City Attorney.
Yeah, the easement in itself says that it would terminate once the facilities are installed upon 180 days.
Oh, okay.
Better yet.
We just have to give notice, saying that we would want to terminate the easement.
Good job, city attorney. Anything else in council? Seems like a slam dunk, then? All right. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution 2025-073 passes. Number three, resolution 2025-074, authorizing participation in the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Smith, city manager.
There are better-known umbrella organizations for police and fire. This is an organization that, as Andy Wright explains in his background report, has served public works agencies in Illinois for many years. DeKalb has been part of this and has actively contributed to other communities' needs as they may arise. The most obvious ones were tornadoes in Fairdale Rochelle in Ottawa over the last 10 years. So, there's a long acronym, IPWAMEN. I don't know if that's how you pronounce it. But since there is a new organization of their purpose, I guess, they have a board of directors now, which requires a council resolution that formalizes our continuing membership, and that's what this is about.
Counsel, questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution 2025-074 passes. Number four, resolution 2025-075, supporting the Illinois American 250 commemoration. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Zazada, city manager. This is exciting.
Well, thank you. I'll limit my remarks to 20 minutes. Is that okay?
A clock.
No, seriously, this is very straightforward. There's a momentous document that was born in our country and has been very pivotal in a lot of ways in our history, at least since July 4, 1776. And in commemoration of the 250th anniversary of the signing of that document, the Declaration of Independence, the U.S. Congress had set up a semi-quinsentennial commission. We'll have to figure a way to shorten that somehow. And at the state level, there is an Illinois American 250 Commission, which has been created. And to become part of that, right now, it's just sort of a, it's a small gesture on our part and a part of those communities in our state that want to be part of this, with more to follow. We want to be listed as members, and that's essentially what this resolution is doing. The municipal league has circulated a resolution, like the one you have in your background tonight, that will help communities basically get on the roll. And then from here, we can do a lot of things. To date, and independently of this particular action, the Citizens' Community Enhancement Commission has been working on some themes that are very consistent with the celebration that's going to occur most of the year next year. I know the mayor is interested in appointing maybe a broader commission that would represent agencies and people from across our community in the recognition, not only of an event and time, but as an invitation so that our community maybe could provide leadership around the states, certainly around northern Illinois, and engaging our citizens to talk about what the meaning of that document was then and now, and what meaning we can find in it. So I'm heartily in favor of this as a professional historian, and I hope you will be, too.
Yeah, to elaborate on what Bill was saying, we will form, we'll call it a Blue Ribbon Committee, whatever we want to call it. But I know the Citizens' Community Enhancement Commission, which our city clerk is chair of, Mr. Brad Hoy, that they're going to be helping lead the charge on what does the celebration look like. But I'd like to go beyond that with Park District Representation, Convention and Visitors Bureau of Representation, and others, to figure out the 250th anniversary of our country is a pretty big deal. And, by the way, the U.S. Army is already at 250 years, just for the record. Marines are coming. That's November, I think. But this is something that, you know, here in municipal government, it gives us an opportunity to draw more attention to our country's anniversary, but then also all the things that we do as a local municipality, and how important government agencies are in delivering the services that are required by the people and that the people want. So my hope is, and I hope we're going to have support of council, that there's opportunity to get multiple people together and have some real thought behind some bigger picture items. Could be the Fourth of July. What does that look like compared to previous years? Could be entry points. I'm bringing that up right now, just from the standpoint, anyone drove in on Peace Road and saw our four-by-eight sheet of plywood that says, "Welcome to DeKalb." It's looking a little worn. So, is this an opportunity that we can gather a bunch of people together and look at some pretty cool projects that, one, highlight the 250th anniversary of this great country, but then also tie in the local connection, that we're proud supporters of the United States of America? And I think we're going to be able to get some people that are going to be behind that, supportive of it, volunteer some time, donate some funds. But I'm a big believer, why not swing for the fences on this one, and we'll see where we ultimately land? So, I think the city manager, for really being a part of the conversation and supportive of that, we've had great dialogue, and I'm really looking forward to seeing how this expands. So, all of council, boy, if you think of anything, see anything, read of anything, have some idea of how we could bolt on something to make sure that next year, the city of DeKalb leads the charge in northern Illinois of what it really means to be proud of being a municipality in the United States of America. I'm definitely open to it. Would love to hear that.
Mayor, just before you go, one last thing?
Sure, same, manager.
Would you indulge one little thing?
Of course.
So, as I was writing this background a couple of weeks ago, amongst some other things on a weekend, I went home and I caught the end of an interview of Ken Burns, who's famous around the country and around the world for about 25, 30 years of doing outstanding documentaries. And most of the people in the room have seen one or another pieces of them. It just happens that this fall sometime, I don't know when, but I think we should look for it, that he is going to be unveiling his latest documentary, which he's been working on for 10 years, and it's called The American Revolution. Or it might just be called Revolution, but it's about the American Revolution. And in the interview, he was asked, "Well, what is our connection to these powdered wig people and all-white men in pantaloons that look kind of odd and fancy shoes?" And he said, "I've thought about that a lot." He said, "Here's what I think." He said, "Until July 4, 1776, everybody in every country was a subject. From that day forward, an evolving number of people in this country and around the world became citizens and enjoyed certain unalienable rights. And I think, as we celebrate our community, as we spritz it up and do other things, I think it's incumbent upon us, those of us who are elected or appointed and serve the public, to come up with language and meaning for what that parcel, that document had to say." So, I'll be saying that again at some point, but I think that's as challenging a comment as I've heard in a long time.
And if you indulge me just for a quick sec, I just got back from spending some time in France and learning about their history, and, you know, during the American Revolution, I'm not going to say if not but for the French. We might not have been victorious, but they were a key component of it, including Baron von DeKalb, who was a German, but ultimately joined the French army to come and fight for freedom, essentially. Well, after the American Revolution, a lot of French went back to their country, and that's when they eliminated their own monarchy and became a free people. So, there's a lot to this 250 that I just don't want us to take it for granted as another year and another day. This is something that, you know, we can really embrace and make special and celebrate the fact that we are citizens of the United States of America. Anything else? All right. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution 2025-075 passes. Number five, resolution 2025-076, approving human services supplemental assistance for various social service agencies beginning August 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $75,000. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Zazada, seconded by Alderman Powell. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. In late May and early June, in response to appeals from a number of local social service agencies who were either experiencing or anticipating a drop in some of their funding support, federal and state, the city council was, took up a consideration to possibly add another $75,000 in supplemental human services grant funding, as the council knows, and people in the audience may know. Each year, for a number of years, we've given out about $225,000 worth. So, this would bring our 2025 total to $300,000. And the council approved that unanimously. Supplemental funding format was set up. It was restricted to those 501(c)(3) agencies that had already been granted some level of funding as part of our annual human services funding package. So, we went out and we solicited applications, and our community services coordinator, Jennifer Yocum, coordinated all of that. We got 15 agencies of the 23 who had applied back in January, and they asked for a total of $231,966. So, the need was demonstrated in that respect. With the $75,000, some tough decisions had to be made. The council gave us some direction on how to do that, and advised us that we really ought to aim at those agencies that were meeting the most urgent needs in terms of food and housing and aid to the disabled or the elderly. So, that knocked out some things, just like what we saw here earlier today. That's a very good candidate for funding in terms of the whole human services package that we do every year. But the focus was not on that kind of urgent need. So, the six that were recommended are in your background. The total comes exactly to $75,000. We recommend your approval.
I was going to kick it off, if that's okay, on this. So, you know, I've had some conversations with various alderpeople, and, one, our hearts are full to be able to expand our human services funding, to go from 225 to 75, or an additional $75,000, which means in 2026, we're going to be able to have $300,000 that we're going to be able to allocate to a lot of the organizations that we have that, obviously, the need is astronomical that's out there. One thing that I'm curious about in particular and would like to see, and it may not be this round, I don't know if it's possible to even do it this round, but definitely have a conversation in 2026, and I'd love council's guidance on that, is these are, we represent the city of DeKalb, and many organizations that we have are county-wide organizations. So, Hope Haven is a county-wide organization, Safe Passages is county-wide, Voluntary Action Centers is county-wide, Family Service Agency, they're all county-wide. And I'm a big believer in all boats rise. We can't just be focused on just the city of DeKalb, what affects us. We need to be looking at a bigger picture. I say that, but from the standpoint of, you know, we are dedicating more local taxpayer dollars towards these organizations, I'm curious if there's support at council to ask city staff going forward, and we can talk 2026. How can we work with these organizations to make sure that the funds that we're contributing to those organizations can be, I'll call it restricted, I don't know if that's the right word or not, but restricted to make sure that it is going directly to the citizens of the city of DeKalb that have that particular need. My hope is, by doing such, that might be a catalyst for other municipalities throughout the county to maybe step up a little bit more and contribute, and I'm not saying they don't, but to be able to contribute to these organizations at a relative funding level like we do here in the city of DeKalb. So, one, I guess I'd be asking the city manager, is that even possible this round? I don't know if it is or not. And I'm not thinking us. We could obviously say that, but realize all these organizations would probably have to restructure how they funnel money, and I do not want to be disruptive to them. But in 2026, could we work with city staff and these organizations to figure out how?
We can work with other agents. So, there are some agencies that have county in their name. There are others that serve a countywide population, maybe even a few people come in from outside the county, even though they may primarily serve DeKalb residents, say it's 70%. But are we, where's the support from the county, from other communities? And can we find out from them? Because they even know better than us what their sources are from communities and how they spread geographically. So, we could figure out some kind of matrix. This is not hard science, but we can figure it out. You know, I thought, well, first of all, it's just, their budget is $300,000 a year, and 70 or 80% is city of DeKalb residents. Well, then you divide by whatever that percentage is, a large percent. But that's not quite right. I mean, because they have overhead, they have other things that they do. So, it's a little tricky, but we can, by asking, we do two things. We raise our legitimate concern about, are others doing their part to help with residents that live in their area? And then the second thing just is, we should, Jennifer does a very good job in, once we have an agreement with an agency, of having them report how they're using the funds through the course of the year, and then a summary report at the end of the year. Somewhere in that conversation, we can figure out some things. So, when you get recommendations, usually the first or second meeting in January, you'll have something to at least look at. Hopefully, it's agreeable. It will be thoughtful, at least, and we'll do our best. Other places have wrestled with this. We're not, this is not a first. We'll figure it out.
Counsel, questions or comments on this?
I think it's a good idea. Voluntary Action Center, obviously, people don't know, that's where I work. You, we're based on a per-meal distribution. I mean, and I will tell you, right now, our waiting list in DeKalb County is 75, and I think the majority of those are within the corporate lines of DeKalb. My LaSalle operation is 275 and growing every day on the waiting list. So, the need is there. But I understand the dollars should be focused on the areas that we're serving, I think is where I'm getting out of that. So, for us, I will go on a limb and say that's a very easy calculation. And I also think, do you want to go on here? I think quarterly reports probably could be amended to, I mean, for us, it'd be very simple.
We'll work on it. And the other thing is, what if, so let's say an agency has basically flat income from this year to next, or let's say it goes up 2% to 3%, but then let's say that the demand from the city of DeKalb for whatever those services are has gone up 20%. You rightfully might say, "Well, wait a minute. What's, what can be done here? What are some other sources? Can we help? I mean, can we get together with our counterparts and just say, 'Hey, this is good for all of us,' rather than letting the social agency, social service agency do all the heavy lifting? I mean, our staff, we can have, you know, a colloquium, I guess you would call it, to talk about how we are funding social services."
I agree. And the other thing to think about is, the, how do I want to put, the restrictions that are put on those, on funds from the state are, don't allow agencies to be selective based on location. So, it's kind of a catch-22, I think, for all the non-for-profits. So, just keep that in mind. So just keep that in mind.
The other, well, Alderman Larson, go ahead.
Well, I do think it could even open up dialogues between the, all of these service agencies that are requesting money, that to meet with them and say, kind of like, is, just because it's in DeKalb, the city of DeKalb, doesn't mean it serves just DeKalb. And what, do we ever see exactly where their monies come from in their budgets? You know, like, we know what we give them, but where do they get other monies from? And, you know, and that's part of it, it's like, oh, well, you know, even Waterman's given some money, and they have a lot less. Or, you know, if you see that everybody's carrying their weight, then to me, it's like, okay, I'm ready to give more. But if you start looking and saying, and they give nothing, hmm, that's very interesting. And so I don't want to necessarily put the screws to the service agencies, but I also sometimes their voice might be heard louder at another city council than us saying, you need to pull your own weight.
Yeah, maybe, I know the DeKalb County Community Foundation, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, but the DeKalb area nonprofits, I can't remember the acronym exactly, but there is.
DCNP.
Thank you. Is that through DCCF or? Yes. So this could maybe trigger a conversation with them on, how can we make sure that other communities are engaging, let's call it on a per capita basis, like the city of DeKalb? Because I think we all know, obviously, what's that?
We should give their budget.
Yeah, okay. So that'd be something that we'd want to look at going forward to figure out again, how can we make sure? I want to continue a conversation that I had as well along these lines, like, you know, we gave an additional ten thousand dollars to Hope Haven, and I told you all, I don't know, six months ago, city manager, we toured Hope Haven, had a conversation with their board of directors afterward. They're doing a lot of just amazing things. And when I think about, and correct me if I'm wrong, but in the county, we're the only homeless shelter?
We are. Hope Haven is the only.
Jennifer, can you go up to the?
Oh, true. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, for the people at home. Sorry about that. You want to answer that question in the microphone?
Sure.
Hope Haven is the only homeless shelter in DeKalb County. Closest other one would be, there's one in Rochelle, and then Hesett House in Aurora, and then there's three up in Rockford.
So the question was, when I was talking with them, I mean, they do a great job, and quite frankly, it fills my heart, I'll use that saying again, that here in the city of DeKalb, we have the only homeless shelter. And we do, I think, when it comes to this national issue, we do our part greatly for trying to contribute to a national crisis that's out there. So this funding, again, when it comes down to it, I know Hope Haven has residents, they're outside the city of DeKalb, because it's a countywide thing. This allows us also to focus on making sure we're doing our part, but more importantly, maybe drawing attention to other communities that need to step up and help with the issues that our people, DeKalb County's people ultimately have. But that led me to, when we were talking with Hope Haven, that I remember they said, like, in the wintertime, as far as being a shelter from the cold, they have never turned anyone away.
They never turn anyone away?
Right.
I lost my.
Okay, so they never turn anyone away. In this topic, I know, we can.
I can go for days.
I know, we're not going to do that, we're not going to do that. Because it doesn't pertain to what I'm asking.
Okay.
So they never turn anyone away. So then, you know, we contributed some architectural improvement money, I think it was, or TIF money, towards the Universalist Church to replace their heater that they had that was failing right before the winter, because they offer services for homeless to come in as a warming shelter during the coldest months. And when I heard that from Hope Haven, I was confused on, well, why, why wouldn't people go to a homing, or a homeless shelter? And the reason I was asking that question is, Hope Haven has access to a variety of resources to be able to help lift people up that are in a homeless situation, whether it's services for drugs and alcohol, whether it's just grants or some aid to get into apartment, to get that job. I think they even do, they help them with resumes and workforce development and all that. So if you can go to Hope Haven, then, and have all those resources, why would you go anywhere else? And my understanding is, the other churches, which, God bless them for doing what they do, don't have restrictions when it comes to drugs and alcohol. So then it's like, okay, we're contributing money to a homeless shelter that has the services to be able to elevate people in need, but then we've got organizations out there that the only reason they are needed is because people don't want to abide by the rules of Hope Haven. I'm oversimplifying, believe me, anyone listening, I'm oversimplifying this. And I'm getting to a point. But that ultimately led me to, if we're having a conversation about restricting funds to DeKalb citizens, I didn't know to be a qualified homeless shelter, which is kind of a big deal. You've got people coming in, volunteers overnight, and we're trying to make a positive impact in society to, with the services that Hope Haven has, and if there are organizations that aren't supporting that methodology, I'll call it, but yet we're financially supporting them, I got a little confused. And then I was wondering, are there certifications you have to have to be a homeless shelter? Like, can anyone be a homeless shelter, or?
There are certain things that they have to qualify for based upon city ordinance and regulations. If they want to receive HUD funding, they have to go through that criteria that they do.
But is anyone doing that outside of Hope Haven?
No.
Okay. So here's, I don't want to wrap it up, because I know we've had a long meeting. We talked about restricting funds. I think there's a larger conversation we should probably have about our human services funding in our community. How can we make sure those funds go directly to DeKalb citizens as much as we possibly can? But also, what are these organizations that are out there? Who is doing what? And making sure that we create an environment that I want to help as many homeless people as possible, but I want to do it in a structured, programmatic way, not outside of that. So I think that might be an interesting conversation that I'd love in some of our one-on-ones, to have a conversation with you all, to get a feel for it, and maybe that's a consideration we bring forward in the future about what this looks like. Alderman.
And most importantly, what are the measures to tell us that we're doing well, we're being successful? And we receive some of those now, but I think to review in general, like you've been referring to, that would aid in our future decisions.
Well, and I think a couple of the ones that you brought up, like the church there on Fourth and whatever, I was in there quite a few times. They're not a true homeless, they were like a warming shelter.
They're an overnight warming center, that's short term. Roughly seventy-one days they served last year.
Right. And that, you know, they were just there to warmth, you're off the street, you can have a meal, and then you're basically out during the day.
Eight AM, done.
So, you know, it's also, we have to be careful about comparing apples to apples and stuff like that, too.
Absolutely, hundred percent. Like I said, I overgeneralize, but we gave, the money we gave the church to be a warming shelter is money that could have gone to our homeless shelter that has never turned anyone away in cold situations, that has all the programs associated with it. So I'm not, I'm not saying anyone's doing anything wrong, it's just, from our standpoint, the tax dollars that we have, we should probably up our game a little bit, just like we did financially, put up our game a little bit on, maybe a little more accountability or a little more awareness from our point, our standpoint of what's going on, what are those dollars being used for, and making sure it's not redundant, essentially. That's all I'm bringing up. Any other comments or questions? Sorry, appreciate you all, let me go down that little bit of rabbit hole. All right, if there's nothing else, I will take, thank you, Jennifer, I'll take roll call, please.
Smith?
Abstain.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rubik?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith? Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution two zero two five dash zero seven six passes. Nice job, council, on, again, providing some well-meaning funds to some great organizations in our community. All right, moving on to number six, resolution two zero two five dash zero seven seven, approving the regulation of traffic for the purpose of holding the Northern Illinois University Homecoming Block Party on Illinois Route Thirty-Eight, Lincoln Highway, between First Street and Fourth Street on October second, twenty twenty-five, beginning at ten AM through October thirty-third, twenty twenty-five at six AM. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Zazada, seconded by Alderman Carlson. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. After a lot of years of quiet around the time of NIU's homecoming, the community and NIU got together in two thousand twenty-two and pulled off a homecoming celebration that we hadn't seen in a long time, involved a parade and a block party downtown, and it's, both have grown in their own way in each of the last three years, this will be the fourth year in a row, and this is also going to be qualitatively better and different, we feel. It's a consortium of groups that have participated in this, the County Convention and Visitors Bureau, the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce, Egyptian Theater, of course, the city of DeKalb, Downtown Merchants, and NIU. So it's a good group to work on this, and what's before you today is just the definition of the date and what we have to do downtown on Lincoln Highway to set aside some quiet space, safe space, so that we can have a parade and a block party.
Council, questions or comments? Yeah?
I just think it's been great the last few years. I went down there, it's like, sometimes it looks like it's bigger than Corn Fest, which I didn't think it was possible.
Last year was huge.
Well, and beating Notre Dame last year. I swear, it's going to be even bigger this year. I really do. I'm all for it.
Yeah, they've been, they've done a great job year over year. I don't know who all attended it, but like Alderman Carlson said, it was massive. So it was really cool. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rubik?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution two zero two five dash zero seven seven passes. Go Huskies. All right, moving on to agenda item K, ordinance's second reading. We have none, which moves us on to the last item. Agenda item L, ordinance's first reading. Number one, ordinance two zero two five dash zero three four, repealing ordinance two zero two two dash zero seven zero, which approved a zoning map amendment from the NC Neighborhood Commercial District to the PDR Plan Development Residential District and the preliminary development plan for the property at one forty-five Fisk Avenue. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Powell. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of the background in this particular item was also background for the public hearing, and councils had a chance to look at that. But for the people who are looking in, or maybe didn't have a chance to read this, the city approved an ordinance back in November of two twenty-two that converted the zoning of the area around the old Saint Mary's Hospital from NC Neighborhood Commercial to PDR Plan Development Residential. There was, obviously, we've talked about it already tonight, an older building, a unique use that had gone away, and we were looking for some, something new, and Mr. Saucer stepped up and said, I've got the idea, and we're going to have apartments here, and tight site, and access was a little bit challenging, but a plan was put together in a conceptual way for you to approve, so that was done back two years and nine months ago. The ordinance that you approved back then approved the establishment of thirty-two apartments in that building. And before any construction on the site, the ordinance required to submit all the final development plan and a review by the Planning and Zoning Commission and by the city council. So the, at this, here's where we stand. Mr. Saucer has not submitted a final development plan, he hasn't requested a time extension, he hasn't resubmitted a preliminary development plan, he's been in violation of a variety of nuisance codes and property maintenance codes. It, this became a bit of a discussion earlier, but one set of continuing fines back about three years, two and a half years ago, came to about eleven hundred and forty-seven dollars. Doesn't seem like a lot of money, but that's a lot of twenty-five dollar fines. That's already gone to collection, because there has been no interest in paying what that fine is, which is what citizenship is kind of about. I screwed up, I should have kept care of my place, I didn't. And additionally, eight hundred and fifty dollars in fines, which are indeed in abeyance, but in adjudication, as it was used as a lever to maybe get some kind of response. But what really got the response from the current owner wasn't any appeals or pleas or the neighbors, it was the fact that he got a certified mailing that said, you better come here, you're going to lose your zoning. Now, Bob Carlson is right, Neighborhood Commercial is not the right zoning for that. You went ahead and did something unique with a special use permit to create a planned development, plan, meaning there's a collaboration between the city and the petitioner, and it's going to be in the best interest of everybody in the neighborhood. And if that plan had been acted on, I think it might have, might have worked, might have achieved the goal that you set out for it. Actually, it was a common shared goal with the developer at that time. But that's not come to pass. If we can't get any response in a legitimate period of time, so it's been two years and nine months, and by his own admission, COVID had nothing to do with it, I think you can look at something else, and you don't need to rush into it. My God has stood there since nineteen ninety-two without a useful purpose. And I will tell you that there is another kind of zoning, it could be planned development residential, but it can also have a couple of houses about the size of the ones just east of it, house lots, and a park in the back. Oh, my. And there are other ideas, I'm not saying that's the best idea, but let's get together with the neighborhood and figure it out. And Mr. Saucer, who is the owner, is welcome to join in that, and maybe he could convince us the error of our ways. But as I sit here right now, how many times do you want to be fooled? First time, what's the old saying, shame on me. Second time, shame on you.
So clarification, city manager, if we rescinded, rescinded, I don't know if it's the right word, to go from one to the other. This is something that should Mr. Saucer come back to us with, the plan is established, everything's, fines are paid, we are ready to break ground. We could easily bring it forward, council, and change back to this ordinance that is currently on the books. Does that make sense?
You could decide not to let it expire, basically, and extend what's already on the books.
If we let it expire.
Yeah.
Is it possible we could just bring it back?
Yep. You can do that anytime, actually, you meet twice a month. You can do this, if we have to go to the plan commission, we do that one Monday, the next Monday, you come back. There's not a lot of time lost here. The time's been lost, not because of any inaction on your part, or because of any slow bureaucratic process on your part. It's because there hasn't been any credible intent to develop this property. We have been taken as fools.
Council, yes.
Alderman Larson.
Okay, so just verifying, we could, we could leave the PDR in place, and whether Mr. Saucer does anything or not, I still agree with Mr. Carlson, that I think this is a better plan than just commercial down there. And as, if I had a home, or an apartment or whatever there, to have some traffic for a store, I wouldn't be excited about that. So if we just leave it in place, and Mr. Saucer doesn't do anything, but it might be that somebody else sees it and buys the property from him and develops that, you know, as what he had planned. I mean, yeah, I'm not excited about the delays and everything, but I'm still excited that it's a PDR, and I think that building would be fabulous if this came to fruition. So I'm not, if we just let it ride anymore, it's not like we're going to tear the building down, we don't have the money for that, we don't own the building. I mean, you know?
Yeah. What do we do about the fact fines have gone unpaid? Issues that the neighbors have have not been addressed completely, I think we heard that from the residents.
Okay, so we changed the zoning, how are the fines going to get paid? Is that going to make any difference?
I think it would be an incredible incentive for the developer to get his act together and get the fines paid, get a final development plan. Like, we heard it's going to be September that it's all going to be done, but this is, I think it's three and a half years that we've been in this situation, and city staff has been working with them. and get the fines paid, get a final development plan. Like, we heard it's gonna be September, that it's all gonna be done, but this is, I think it's three and a half years that we've been in this situation. And city staff has been working with them. Again, fines have gone unpaid. Hasn't been any communication. I don't know if you've heard from Mr. Saucer. Has anyone heard from Mr. Saucer? I haven't heard from Mr. Saucer on, on anything going on, but I've definitely heard from residents in the neighborhood about issues with the property. So I think part of this is, I agree, the zoning that it has right now, fantastic. But our efforts to work with the developer have not played out. So this is a way, if we rescind it, you either gotta get your act together, bring it forward to us, a real plan that you are actually gonna execute on. Otherwise, this could go on another year or two, and no progress is being made, like has been the last three and a half years.
I guess, to me, it doesn't, I think changing or not changing this, that's not gonna say what's gonna happen, because if, if Mr. Saucer still owns it, he can still sit there, you know? So I guess, I don't see that this is any lighting a fire to make anything else happen. So.
What do we do about the, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
So if you guys remember, I feel like in the past, we had a scenario similar to this, where we, we just gave some deadlines, and we said, hey, look, here's our timeline, meet it, or we're letting this project go. But I hear what Alderman Larson is saying, specifically that he's still gonna own it. So that's, that's a big deal. But I also, I think that we could put some pressure with the timeline, perhaps?
Yes, Alderman Burick, sorry.
Well, we heard September, so would counsel be interested in moving to postpone until our first meeting in October? And if it's not done, then we're done.
Perfect.
Others? Oh, Alderman Smith, hang on, City Manager. Try it, Alderman Smith.
I don't see it. If we dissolve this, I don't see this council bringing it back. I mean, I don't think any of us are gonna be off counsel. So if we did dissolve it, I don't think, even with a, you know, I don't see us, I don't see us going back. I really, I'm not gonna speak for everybody here, but I really think, you know, we've, we've extended. And I agree with Alderman Zazada, that we offer that up to somebody, and I was just trying to search for it and remember who it was that we put timelines on.
We did that with faddies, with video gaming. We've done it. We've done it before.
Yeah. Maybe that's the proper thing to do in this case. But we can also pass this on first reading and let it set. I don't know if we have a timeline. Sorry.
No, no, you're fine. You mentioned not wanting to bring it back. I would be totally open to bringing it back. Like, again, I'm trying to, I'm trying to incentivize progress. So, City Manager?
Well, there is an edge to my voice, because I speak for the staff that have just tried to cajole and plead and work with this project for the last two, almost three years. But let me, let me speak, hopefully thoughtfully, on what our role is here. We just, we had the first 45 minutes of our meeting tonight dedicated to more development, more thinking, more creative work in the Antiguo de Norte neighborhood, which was a priority of an earlier council. You've carried that forward. I think we're all in favor of that. This neighborhood was a priority of the councils 30 years before that. And I cut my teeth on the DeKalb-on-Fisk redevelopment, which is the first TIF project that we did in this town.
I remember it.
Eighty-nine, and ninety, and ninety-one. I drew model home designs for the houses that are there now. And you know what? We, at that time, we decided, because there was a more romanticized view of that building, it was in a lot better shape then, and for historic reason, we decided not to touch it. And it had been closed already for 20-some years, and not really purposely, you know, any long-term purpose to it. And here it is again today. It's still there. It's just deteriorating, deteriorating. It's been gutted, you know, asbestos reportedly been removed. But there it sits. It doesn't really conform to anything in the neighborhood anymore. It's not giving birth to kids, you know? The neighbors, generation after generation, said, when is that building coming down? So if you want to redevelop, and you want to complete the promises that were made 40 years ago, I'll tell you, if it costs, and we've looked at some costs of demolition, and I can tell you, it will do one block of a street in our town, and we're spending millions of dollars on streets. And when it's all said and done, they're just streets. Yeah, we want them done, and I'm not gonna speak against it. I'm the one who finds some money to do that. But I'll tell you, if you want to change the neighborhood for the better, we should be thinking bigger than getting along and going along. And I feel very, obviously, I feel very strongly about it. And the, and the conversations can be held. It can be creative. It can involve the neighborhood. That's, by the way, how DeKalb-on-Fisk was done. And neighbors who didn't have their properties torn down for that ended up getting remodeling done and so forth. Now, we don't have a TIF there anymore, but we're only talking about one lot. Everything else has been kind of tidied up. I think there's possibilities here. And I think if we just say, let's just postpone this, we don't invite the kind of conversation, creative conversation, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe there isn't a creative way to do this. But I think we haven't even tried. And I think we're, we do better than that.
Alderman Zazada.
I understand where the City Manager is coming from, and I understand the frustration. And I'm sorry that you guys have experienced that. It sounds really terrible. However, what I'm seeing, the struggle here, the next steps, if we were to go that way, City Manager, what I see is, he still owns the property. And if a property owner, you know, if we don't want to go the gateway of eminent domain, then we're not really, we don't really have a space to move forward.
Why wouldn't that be part of the conversation? What did we do with Hunter Hillcrest? What did we do with Campus Cinemas? What, how do we rejuvenate that, that AGN neighborhood? We didn't say, well, it's, well, it's tough, but.
I just think that the temperament of council doesn't seem to be fully in support.
Vocalize as well. Go ahead, Alderman Powell.
Well, I've got plenty complaints on that property as well, and, I mean, poor communication, unpaid fines, nothing's happened. So I'm not with it. I say we pull it. I mean, I don't know what else we're waiting for.
Could I ask Mr. Saucer a question? Because we're out.
I do want to establish, like, I don't want to, we had a previous meeting where we vilified someone, it was back and forth, and we attacked someone. This is our opportunity to have our discussion. We had the public hearing. I'm okay if you need a point of clarification, but I'd really like to keep this conversation to us as much as possible. So I'm, I'm fine. You asked your question to Mr. Saucer. I just want to preface it.
Yeah. I guess a lot of the discussion is, and City Manager brought this up, and excuse my French, why the hell should we believe you this time? So you came with all these stories, but what can you, you know, why didn't you pay the fines? Why didn't you do all this? And?
As far as, as far as the fines go, I think there's a miscommunication. I went to the municipal court, even talked with the city, and said, hey, this is a large fine. Can you work with me? Said, absolutely. We just want to get some process going, or project going. And if we see the, you know, see it going, then we can either waive or reduce the fines. So I went with, and spoke with staff and city attorney at the municipal court, and the judge said, fine, we'll give you till September. If it's an issue of patience is worn thin, I'll pay the fines tomorrow. That's, you know, not, I certainly understand the eagerness to get this project going. And again, I apologize for the delay. And the last thing I want to be doing is taking up your valuable, valuable time to be dealing with it. So I apologize. I can come in tomorrow and pay those fines, you know, and not have to bother any, any more time about that. I'm here saying, I apologize for the delay. And I'm here, I think everyone agrees, it's a great project, and it's ready to do, it's gonna be good for the neighborhood. We're almost ready to go. So if you could either just be patient, give me a little more time, or, you know, set a timeline. But I don't want to also waste staff's time, because like you said, you could rescind it and then reapprove it down the road. But we're so much closer than that. Like, I would hate to waste everyone's time. If you can just table this for a little bit, we'll, we'll get in here with the final plat and the other items that the staff has requested, and, and we won't waste anyone's more time.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments or questions, counsel? Yes?
Alderman Carlson. The only thing I would say is, yeah, I rode my bike down Fisk Avenue when I went to Clicken Rosette, and former Alderman who sat in my spot, Perkins, when bringing up the Fourth Street Corridor, 50 years went by, and nothing happened. We have to do something. And in this case, 30 years has went by. The more we keep waiting, the more these things don't happen. So I'm with you of a little bit of time, but we have to start seeing things. If not, I keep talking about momentum, it stops. We have to keep it going. So I would be for this, if, if it's not going to keep going.
And I don't, I know we've extended time before, and some of those projects never came to fruition. So we've been down this road, kind of. Ultimately, you know, we're doing a lot in the City of DeKalb, and we are trying to move things forward. And we got a property that, that is in poor condition and has not been maintained. And we hear it from the residents of the Fifth Ward about that. We're being told by city staff that we're not getting a lot of cooperation from the developer. Your family name is a solid name in the community, absolutely. Bob Carlson, to me, I have the most incredible respect for, and believe, and, and understand what he's talking about. But I'm also just like, you know what? We're moving here. We're trying to make real change in the City of DeKalb. And if we don't have good partners in particular projects, I think we need to move on. I say all that from the standpoint of, I'm hearing you all loud and clear. I know Alderman Powell isn't necessarily for moving it forward. You know, if, if we are going to leave this in place, and what I'm hearing, it sounds like we're gonna vote no to rescind this, then I want to make sure that we are putting a deadline to it, period. You need to, you need to move forward and complete this. Otherwise, our tolerance level will be zero. And I think you've been in this community a long time. Things have changed at the City of DeKalb. You will not find a more business-friendly and a better partner in the success of anyone's endeavor. But if you're gonna have a project, I'm gonna say, causes harm to the community and especially to the neighbors, then that's where you're gonna feel the full force of us. And I don't want to get to that point. Like I said, I respect the family name. I respect Bob Carlson, and I respect counsel's opinion on, we wanna, we wanna move this forward, but we're not gonna tolerate it for too much longer, is what I'm hearing. Right? Yes, Alderman Larson.
I mean, back to the timelines and everything, I would, I don't know if I can do this, but to make a motion that we table this until the next meeting. And if the fines are paid in complete, you know, in totality, you're, you're square with the, with the city, then they can be tabled until September 1st. And then we want to see, something has to be, it could be two-part, that you have to start showing us plans, and then, and then it just keeps getting tabled. Yes?
I think we get even more specific where fines are paid, but the requirements of why we made this modification are, are brought forward. I mean, I'm hearing September is, is when that can happen. So if we said, let's say, October 1st, I would like to hear from city staff that he has met substantial completion towards that project, and we're moving forward. Otherwise, we pull it. City Manager, I know where you're at on this, and I know the history that you have, and I know the passion that you have, absolutely. But I wanna, if we're gonna rescind it, and the answer is no, we're in the exact same situation we are. So I'd rather see us come up with a compromise here that works for everybody.
What if the fines are paid, the promises are made again, and then nothing happens?
We pull it.
You can't pull it. You, you make an ordinance.
Continue it. They, they would reconsider it at that time.
Yeah. Well, that's, I'm sorry, what I mean, pull it. We bring this back, and we rescind it, and go back to the way, absolutely, absolutely. So I'm not looking for an answer on a date right now from Mr. Saucer. I say we have to work with city staff, we come up with a timeline. City Manager, you can review that with myself and some other council members to see if we're acceptable on that. I'm thinking definitely before the end of this year here.
Well, I think the fines have to be paid before next meeting, or I'm gonna vote no. I mean, whatever. Yes.
So if you are gonna have a motion to continue or postpone, then that needs to be made and seconded. That would be voted out before. Yeah. But I want to be clear on when we postpone it, what the expectations are from Mr. Saucer, and then. Understood. Make sure city staff are, I don't know the word, but, but that city staff understand the direction council's trying to give.
I understand, and I hear you. There are two sets of fines, and we can't forget that, there's, there's some that are out there for collection right now. It has nothing to do with what you were, before the administrative hearing judge about, and you were cutting a deal on. So those have to be paid immediately. And the other fines, too. And then maybe we, we find some intent. But the, the proof is gonna be in, let's see some plans. Let's, let's see what you expected to be done, done, in a reasonable amount of time. And you can set that, I would say, by, by the 1st of September. So that would give us both meetings in August, and, and then we'll see.
Okay. Before we make that motion, Mr. Saucer, like I said, you're never gonna find a better partner in your project, absolutely. But our expectations, and I think you would appreciate it, other developers, we've been burned before, but other developers that are out there, you want a city council that is behaving this way to make sure that when we do projects, people are held accountable, they do what they say they're gonna do, and we improve DeKalb. That's what we're trying to do. So this really is in everyone's best interests. It sucks maybe being on your end, but in ways, you brought this upon yourself. So here we are. So at this point, I would take a motion to postpone this item until the next council meeting.
So moved.
Do you want the next one, or the October? Oh, October, yeah. Yeah, sorry. October 13th, counsel. My bad.
Well, okay, so, but I, I was hoping that the fines would have to be paid by next meeting. And if the fines weren't paid by next meeting, that tells me your commitment is, so, I don't know how you're gonna write that in the minutes, but, but to me, you've got, you've got, you've got two weeks to pay those fines, all of them, old and new. That's your first step of, of a commitment. And maybe you said you have the landscaping plans and stuff. Don't wait till everything, till you get the plat. Go ahead and show all the steps, and keep us super informed.
Let's find out what staff thinks. What do you think, there, City Manager?
Just, just looking at the calendar of meetings, the first meeting in September is September 8th. September 1st really doesn't have meaning because it doesn't fall on your meeting night. So why don't we make it till September 8th? You have an opportunity to bring anybody before, Mr. Saucer, others before you, to explain where we are. In the meantime, as far as the payment of fines, I think our Assistant City Manager can handle that with Mr. Saucer, and can see that the fines are paid by the end of the week, everyone.
So, so to be clear, you're saying the next, well, no, the September 8th meeting, I think you said, is the first meeting in September. Okay, that we would bring this back.
Some people may be not here, and not later, later in August, and, you know, so.
Counsel? Okay. So we need a motion to postpone this till the September 8th council meeting.
Correct.
I have a motion.
I move to postpone until the September 8th council meeting.
Second.
All right, move by Alderman Zazada, seconded by Alderman Larson. Crush it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate you.
You gotta vote.
Oh, sorry, roll call. Sorry.
Powell?
No.
Rubik?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Carlson?
Confuse real quick.
So I'm sorry. This is a motion to postpone it.
To postpone?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
All right, motion, or ordinance, or motion passes. Do we have to do anything with the, does that supersede the original motion?
Correct.
It does, okay. All right, beautiful.
That's what I was gonna be, yeah, yeah, sorry.
All right, then moving on to Agenda Item M, Reports and Communications, Council Member Reports. Alderman Zazada, you want to kick us off?
No report.
Alderman Smith?
Uh, the streets, they're all torn up. Drive a little slower. The contractor's behind because it's been really, really hot. So please be patient. There's a lot going on.
Alderman Powell?
No report.
Alderman Burick?
Quite an outstanding week in Word 6. Drum Corps International sold every ticket that they planned to sell for the event at Husky Stadium.
That's great.
On Saturday night. 6,500 in attendance. Unbelievable show. Looking forward to them coming back in September, and then an additional time, hopefully next year. Great work by all, especially our volunteers. Great work by all, especially our volunteers.
Alderman Carlson?
I've only got a couple things, one, I always bring this up, but, and I'm sorry to bring it up, my neighbor for the last sixteen years, Elmer Brown, passed away. And why I bring him up is, he was a great neighbor, not because he was so always nice and everything, he kept everybody honest with your yard and what you did and cutting your trees and all that, and he's a Fourth Warder, been in DeKalb, I think, for seventy-some years. So, he's a great man, and my condolences to his family, he was a great neighbor to me. The other was, in the last couple weeks, I haven't been out as much, but I did go by the one Quickie Mart and the one gas station in the Fourth Ward to talk to him about the THC products and the creatinine or whatever it's called. Again, they're very on board, saying they will help and everything else. The last thing is, still taking calls from people, garbage cans, I'm getting calls from businesses, it, it's been great, a lot of people still wanting to talk about DeKalb in a great manner.
Alderman Larson?
Just two quick things, I was able to attend the parade, and I don't wanna say festivities, but the parade that helped promote safer DeKalb streets and peace and, and lower gun violence, and that was pretty well-attended, the, the night was pretty warm. And then this week, Mayor Barnes and his wife, and my husband and I, we helped be part of the last fun jam in the park, and that was just such a magical evening, it was really, it was really a good time to be part of that.
And I did very little on that except hand out some burgers, my wife made, I don't know, two hundred Rice Krispie treats, but Alderman Larson and her husband grilled out a hundred and fifty burgers, did all the shopping and all that, so definitely gotta give the Larson family a lot of kudos for that. Also, we've said it over and over again, but great job, chief, that event is, it's just incredible, and I would encourage all Aldermen next year to spend some time, attend it, Alderman Powell's been an active participant and a regular there, it's just a, it, it's a great way of building community relations, especially for our police department, and your whole team do an absolutely amazing job with that. I was just in Champaign, I got back from three days at the Summer IML, that's the Illinois Municipal League, our quarterly meeting, it was great, had the opportunity to tour Champaign, their African-American Trail was just incredible, and the amount of murals that they have that tie to historical significant of African-Americans in the city of Champaign, it was really moving, but to see the amount of murals they have and the sculptures that they have in their parks, we gotta dial up our game. We're doing a great job with wrapping utility boxes and the murals that we have, but I'm telling you, there's some, there's some towns out there that have really prioritized art, and the fascinating thing was, I asked them, have any of your murals been tagged? No. And if you remember on the underpass of Antigliden, when we did Paint it Red and put Husky paw prints, we were really concerned about it being tagged, 'cause it was regularly tagged, hasn't been. And it's one of those things that's, yeah, what, yeah, it's one of those things, though, that I think everybody, when they see art, positive emotional connections associated with it, and behaviors change. So, I, I really hope council continues to support the investment that we have in our arts, but I'd like to see us in 2026, just like we're doing with everything else, maybe nudge ourselves a little bit more and continue the progress that we're making. But with the IML, besides the great tour, and we had dinner in the Illini Stadium, got to see all that, it was the relationship building, so really got to work with the mayor of Rockford, Mayor McNamara, a bunch, and it's just great to hear what's going on in his community, and there's a lot of similarities, even though they have a larger size, but then also working with the mayor of Macomb, Carbondale, Charleston, these are all university towns, what's going on, what are they doing, and just a lot of great collaboration. So, I appreciate council's support for us being in the Illinois Municipal League, but from a relationship perspective and a knowledge perspective, from me being a part of it, it's fantastic, but then also, we had a lot of conversations about the big, beautiful bill that's coming forward, and there's conversations about Gem T being threatened, which isn't good, there is a lot of conversations about things in that bill, it just, dust is still settling on it, but how it's gonna impact us as a municipality, and the IML and their team, especially with the leadership of Executive Director Brad Cole, really do advocate and champion for municipalities at the state level, but also at the federal level. So, that organization, I'm, every time I'm around them, I'm continuing to be impressed about the value that they bring here and the membership that we have and the ROI that we're getting on that, so. City manager, what you got?
Two quick things.
Yeah.
I wanna introduce a friend of this government and the process that you go through every, every couple weeks, Cameron Moore, would you stand up, Cameron? He is a sophomore becoming a junior, so I guess we call you a junior now, DeKalb High School. He has a four-point, unweighted, he is, is in student government, he is in, is it the debate society, is that what you call it? Speech, yes, right. Plays in the band orchestra, is very interested in American government and also in a career in public administration, so I learned about this a couple weeks ago, we had a couple conversations, I asked him to come here and see a meeting in action, and he had an opportunity to see a very passionate meeting tonight, and I, I think it's a sign that we all care very much about this community.
Yes, absolutely.
And where we're going, and we're not about show here, we're about go. So, I think it's a delight to have his interest, and, and if he's still interested after tonight, we'll figure a way for him to do a little, do a little shadowing. And then, one last thing, I, I wanna thank the mayor for very appropriately having that moment of silence at the top of the, silence, at the top of the meeting. And also, it was very appropriate that you would thank our fire and police departments, and I especially wanna thank Acting Chief Howison. He had a tough event that went on for some five and a half hours until everybody was on their way back and in service, and couldn't have a tougher, in terms of personal and human feeling, to, event to deal with, and very grateful for the way everybody collaborated last night, but especially proud of Acting Chief Howison.
Agreed.
All right, moving on to N, executive session, we have none, which leads us to O, adjournment, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Carlson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, same sign, we are adjourned.